Most kind gracious heavenly Father, we come to you once again, Lord, we just thank you so much for each and every blessing that you poured out upon us all. God, we just pray that you be with our meeting tonight. And Lord, may we all strive to serve this county in which we're here to serve. And Lord, there's only one way I come to you, that's in your Son Jesus Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Jim, if you'd please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisible, with liberty and justice
Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Will.
Dewey Eskenon.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Here.
Samantha Trenton.
Here.
James Woody.
Here.
First on agenda is approval minutes of previous meetings.
I make the motion to approve all unapproved minutes of previous meetings.
I second that.
Got a motion by John, second by Jeremy. Any discussion?
Special.
Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes. Next is approval reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
A motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Rowcall. What did I say? Oh, Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Next is approval notaries. We've got two in the package we want to add about tonight. Kelly Nan from Benton, Tennessee, Amanda Maples from Benton, Tennessee, and April Robertson from Copperheal. Is that all of them? Okay. Got a motion by James, second by Mark. Any discussion? Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Next is budget amendments. We have any budget amendments tonight?
Shouldn't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Budget amendments. Moving on, we have Southeast Development District, Commissioner Shawcans.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chairman. Back in April, the state of Tennessee put out a grant opportunity and the county applied for it. It was a small grant called Asset-Based Planning. You could use it for several different things, working with the chamber. They put in a grant request and we just heard last week that the state wants to fund it. And let me explain to you what it was. It was a grant request to run a 15-minute or 15-second commercial before a movie starts in selected markets in the region. And we sort of targeted Asheville, North Carolina, Cherokee, North Carolina, Hendersonville, Dalton, Georgia, Cartersville, and Kennesaw, trying to get those affluent counties to try and draw folks to the area to spend money. The grant is for, and I can tell you, the total grant amount is $15,675. That's a 5% match, so the match would be $825. And the chamber, I spoke with them last week, they already have that budgeted in their budget for the year. What I'm coming to you is, the grant has to flow through the county, so we'd like to have the county's approval naturally to do that. Do you have any questions? The movies, they were running in the spring and the fall, eight weeks in the spring, eight weeks in the fall. And we'll get those little videos created and get them into the movie theaters, sort of have a captive audience that can't really go anywhere.
So you're letting us to allow you to do the flow-through?
Yes, sir.
Us to accept the funds?
If you did accept the funds, yes, sir. And just float it through.
One question, did you choose the theaters or?
Well, no, we had a group with the chamber that looked at it and sort of selected the theaters. Yes, sir. No, I, I let y'all do that.
And the money's coming from?
The Tennessee Economic and Community Development.
I make a motion that we accept funds from the Tennessee Economic and Community Development Grant for Expenditure for Designated, for Designated Expenditures.
I'll take it. Got a motion by John, second by you. Is there any more discussion? Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for taking time to explain that.
Oh, okay.
Get it done.
Yeah, I'm a little work with the county mayors to get all the contracts and everything. Okay.
Next is West Polk Fire and Rescueways. I'll put that on the gym. Does anybody hear West Polk?
Chairman, your permission to lock the approach and head up a couple of, a couple of stairs. About three minutes of time. What is, what I'm gonna do first is give you an old background of how we got to this point. And then bring you up to date for the due and temporary ask for this. And then we'll be posting those statements as well as questions that you may have. From the background, eight years ago, West Polk Fire Rescue set a motion to plan to improve the services it provides to citizens of Polk County. Oh yeah, let me start off. My name's Ronnie Goss. I'm a tying commander of Bradley County Fire and I'm the technical rescue chief for West Polk Fire Rescue. Got a little ahead of myself. It said motion to plan to improve the services provided to the citizens of Polk County. Part of the plan was implementing firefighting training and certification through Tennessee Commission on Firefighting. Firefighting curriculum was submitted and approved that exceeded the state's minimum requirements for firefighting. This allows West Polk Fire Rescue to begin teaching commission-approved classes in-house. And upon completion of these classes, personnel became eligible to sign up for commission testing that would lead to certification and accreditation. As a result, we've had several of West Polk Fire Rescue have become career firefighters with neighboring departments. I think that this, we just hired two that are in RITC school now, so it brings up five through the implementation of this program, five people who didn't know they'd be a career firefighter, now have their career as a firefighter, or if beginning their career. Six years ago, we began updating technical rescue equipment that allowed West Polk Fire Rescue to provide services that in the past would have required outside help from neighboring departments due to lack of equipment and training. Now, we have the equipment and training necessary to provide these services, services such as water rescue, technical rope rescue, trench structural collapse, confined space, stand-by and rescue. So, with all this being said, I'm standing here before you today to ask for county, to use, ask for use of county-owned property on Welcome Valley Grove. We've been working diligently, diligently with the funding available to us, and that is how we've gotten to where we are today. The next step in the process would be to build a training facility or training center at that location. It's actually with, I guess it was a horse arena, used to be the horse arena, it would be that actual location. And in the second page in this book is actually, will show you a layout of what's proposed at that location. This would occur over a five-year period with reviews and evaluations at the end of each year. We will solicit help from local industry and private donations for material and funds. The fire section could be completed in as little as two years. This will be available to all Polk County and neighboring departments that respond to Polk County to use. It will be completed in stages, beginning with the burned buildings and fire props behind the burned building. In order to set for testing and certification through Tennessee Commission on Firefighting, you have to complete practical examinations. And those involve a multi-level interior fire attack, propane fire, car fires, dumpster fires, and things of that nature. And those will all would be able to take place at this facility. We place a lot of remains on our volunteers that result in their time away from their families. This facility will allow us to better manage that time. Currently, we hold classroom training in-house and must travel to neighboring counties to perform skills necessary to complete the training. This facility will allow us to go from the classroom directly to the drill field. It will also allow us to train with other responding agencies like State Forestry, TBA, state and federal parks. In the fire service, we often hear about serious injuries and even death on emergency scenes that can be categorized as low-frequency, high-impact events. These events are caused, are caused, that don't occur every day, but have the potential for serious injury or death to first responders. Structural firefighting and technical rescue fall into this category. Having a facility that will allow us to train on these disciplines multiple times a year will help us reduce our chances of a serious injury or even worse, the line of deadly death. Personal, personnel certified in technical rescue would also use this facility to get re-certified annually. Couple statistics. In closing, I'll leave you with a few statistics. West Polk Fire Rescue has 55 active volunteers that respond on, respond on average to the following number of low-frequency, high-impact events annually, 50 structure fires on average. That's a lot. We probably respond on 70 in Bradley County. So, what makes these low-frequency, high-impact is the fact you don't do them every day. If you're doing first response calls, you know, you know, you know what needs to be done, the potential for injury to the first responder isn't that great. So, I mean, you kind of have that training built in. We're at 70 accidents with injuries and/or entrapment. Of these, 10% will require advanced rope systems for vehicles off steep embankments for access and removal of patients. Do about 15 women and search and rescues, of these 10 will require technical rescue for extraction. On average, 20 water calls, covering everything from flooding, vehicles in the river, drownings, or late returns on rescue trips, happens quite often. Average about 10 fall calls a year that require removal from an elevated location. And about five crime scenes, which would involve removal of the victim of violent crimes or self-harm from remote locations. I'd be, at this time, happy to answer any question that you may have.
How much money do you use out of pocket to use other facilities to fight that?
Excuse me?
How much do you use, how much money do you use using other facilities building combat?
If we sent, Tennessee Commission on Firefighting, Tennessee Fire and Coats Academy is located in Belbuckle, Tennessee. And for us to send them for the class that we can do in-house, it'll cost $700 per firefighter. Not counting traveling expenses. It's $60 a day for housing at the academy, and then you've got to pay for the, the class itself. So, it averages $700 per firefighter. If we just sent them over for the live burn portion of it, it will still cost us $300 per firefighter, to get a firefighter one live burn and a firefighter two live burn in. And as I said earlier, they include things like a multi-level interior attack, and what that entails is, if you look on the second page of this, of your booklet, you'll get an idea of what this training facility would look like. So, we can just kind of run through that real quick. The second page is, is the use of Connex boxes. And, you know, the thing about these boxes is, you start cutting these walls out and you can open them up, of course, and pretty much design it however you want. And there's, there'll be several pictures after that, kind of give you an idea, you look at it, of how those can be designed and laid out. And then after that, there's some pictures that involve train fires that we'd have at this location, the one on the top is a propane fire, this is a pit fire, and then car fires and things of that nature. These pictures are from the Bradley County location, which is currently where we have to go now. It's the closest place for us to go now to be able to get this training in. All of our crops will be propane, propane crops, operating on propane. We have a propane distributor who's not only going to give us the tank to provide, dial them down with the propane a year for running, which will be more than enough. So, the short answer to your question is $700 per person. And we were, the biggest thing is, we've got to send them next two weeks. And that takes time away from their families. You know, we pull out the man from their time and they give us their time. I've been a volunteer for 20 years. I've been a paid firefighter for 15. And I became a paid firefighter so I could get paid to do what I love, but I volunteered because it's what I'm supposed to do. And that's what most of these people are, they give unselfless, slay their time. And they don't prefer.
What is our commitment as far as, I mean, you need permission to use a property? Is there a timeframe or a minimum amount of years or?
No, that would be up for you to decide, I would hope. To be honest with you, I haven't really thought of that. And in talking with Chief Woffey and Chief Jaski, that didn't really come up, but. I was just, I was looking at county property on DIS and, and I just drove down Welcome Valley Grove and saw the facility all grown up. And I thought, man, this would make a, all the dirtwork's already done, they already got electricity there. I mean, things that would cost us a lot of money to get done on an unapproved piece of property. It was already there.
I'm 100% in support of us, asking the right questions. Who's liability insurance would that be, would it be through the fire and rescue?
It would follow with our department.
The county, you'd have no liability?
No, sir. BFIS is the insurance company for the fire department, and they would be covered under that as well as workers' comp.
And who's building the building?
We will be constructing the facility. I'm in contact now with a shipping container company that's gone out of business, and we're hoping to have six of the Connex boxes donated.
I've got just a couple of quick questions. Location, you said the old riding rink?
Yes, sir.
Is that rink, Robbie, you may know a little more, I thought, is that rink not in Hammond's Park? Is it not part of that Hammond's Park?
Don't say it is part of Hammond's Park, but I also know from my four years of being out on the softball fields, I've never seen anybody in four years, and the windows are busted out of, you know, parts of that facility that were designated for the riding rink itself and boards broke or something. It's definitely not being used or overhyped.
No, that's, that's not the reason I was asking. Hammond's Park was built under a grant, and the specifics of that grant, the land and property designated as Hammond's Park had to be used for specific things dealing with children and dealing with the ball. And from time to time, they still come back in check on that grant to make sure that they send compliance.
Well, I do know the property just to the, to the left of the rink is.
It's not. It's outside the park. But is that particular property you're looking at in the Hammond's Park designation?
I'm pretty sure it's not in the Hammond's Park because you've got the, you've got the old, what would be the old middle school softball field?
And soccer field used to play on this property?
No, the soccer field's to the north.
Yeah, they played on.
Yes, south, I'm sorry, yes, indeed, it's south. And then the middle school baseball field would be to the north of this property. Then you'd get into the Hammond's Park area.
Yeah, I know they did. My son played on that property on youth soccer, and I believe her grandson did too. It was on the property that used to be the riding rink.
But I think, I remember when the riding arena went up, because that was, that was through 4H at the time, because that's when Karen Corley was there. And so it's, I mean, that's a good possibility that everything's good, I mean, with it, but like he said, it probably does this to maybe be checked on just to make sure. I just wanted them to make sure deals and.
The only other question I have is on the structure y'all are planning on building, if it goes in that location. You know, you've got kids down there, T League, you've, K-12's not down, or, A-12's not down there anymore. But you've got four ball fields, including softball. How secure is this structure going to be?
Well, right now, I currently have a fence around it. Improvements will need to be made to that fence. On the, the left side of the arena is where the actual trucks will come in and circle around and come back out. We would have to put a gate, a gate up and be able to secure that property. That's also one of the benefits of where it is, is it would make it, we could go ahead and start with your approval, of course, Phase One of this project, which would be determining exactly where we've got this, this structure, and start the foundation work on it and go from there. But yes, it will have to be fenced and secured. We have to show that we've provided reasonable, a reasonable effort to secure it, so relieve us of liability. If someone crawls over the fence, we can't stop that.
Right. What I was thinking, you've got a lot of kids running around playing ball, a lot of kids coming to watch ball in a building sitting there that's.
Well, now, the building itself will be secure.
The building itself will be secure.
Yeah, it'll have, if you'll notice, again, on the second page or third page, those are commercial entry doors that are on that facility.
Yeah.
And they'll be locked, the windows will be locked, and you can only open those windows, which will be still, basically, we'll build a frame out to a square tube, and we'll coat it, we'll see it will levigate still. And it'll have, you can only open it from the inside. So, once those doors are locked, unless they cut the doors off the lock to get into the building, the building will be secure.
So, when you do this training, it's going to be all Polk County, even East Polk will be able to do it?
East Polk, West Polk, anybody that, anybody that responds into Polk County, if McCaslin and Blair's will know, folks, if they want to use it, they're more than welcome to use it. I mean, we, we, I say we as Bradley County, when we built our facility, it was the same way. We have tri-community coming in, using our facility, Polk County uses our facility, anybody who wants to schedule and use the facility is more than welcome to use it. The only thing we ask of them, since we pay for our propane out of pocket, is that they pay for the propane they use. We even have industries such as Boll Water and Olin that brings their fire brigade down and uses our facility for training. That is what we hope to do with local industry, is approach them and say, this is available to you, you know.
Only other question I have on equipment sitting around outside the building.
There should be no equipment sitting around outside of that.
Shouldn't be anything used for storage, extra vehicles that can't be parked in the stations or anything that end up out there sitting around. All the reason I asked that, I've had some comments about.
Outside of what you see on this face, there should be nothing sitting outside of that facility. I want this to be something we're proud of, that Polk County's proud of. I don't want it to be an eyesore. The plan is eventually, on the side that faces the road, there'll be plant leman cypress down through there so that they grow and fill in, and it's not even visible from the road. That's my plan. That's what I want. Whether it can get summer.
How much of that property do you need? You need all of it?
No, all we need is the, what's inside that fence. 250 feet by 130 feet of that fence. For, we're a service-oriented department, and we provide a service to the citizens of Polk County at no cost. To the, I mean, some departments like Highway 58, you have to pass a certificate for them to come, you call, you got a fire, you don't pass the certificate, that's not the way it is.
I make a motion that we table this the next meeting and work with them about coming to a timeframe on allowing them to use it, how long that we want to start out with and be able to follow up on. I talked to Steve today, and he said something about maybe a truck or two in the back.
I don't know anything about that. Michael, we're getting the building. My friends will put anybody inside that fence.
Yeah. But I make, like I said, I make a motion that we table this the next meeting, and in that timeframe, that we'll get together with them and find out what their idea of a timeframe of like leasing, like a lease to them, allowing them to use it. And that would give us time to work out anything that we're not really familiar with, what they're going to do.
We also need to find out if it's on in the heart.
In the heart or not.
Yeah, we need to find out where that property belongs to.
Chief Woffey couldn't be here to see him, they're having trouble with the communications and the dispatch equipment, the paging and the equipment, they're working diligently, trying to get that, that problem resolved. So, I thought he was going to be here and talk to me recently, they're still working on that problem.
You second that, Samantha?
Yeah.
I have a motion by James, the second by Samantha, the papers to the November meeting. Any more discussion?
Might want to check on the building, Land Committee.
Yeah, the Building Committee. I'll talk to them if everybody can, and I'll get John Hope to post to where everyone may, have the Building Committee meeting before the November meeting.
I'm available anytime, any questions you may have. Anything else that you need from the fourth November meeting, if you can thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Rowcall.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon.
Yes.
Daniel Will.
Hi.
You're going to pass it because you don't know. Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Hope Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next is announce, Mrs. Stevens. I know Ms. Thompson won't speak on Veterans.
Yes, just to give the County Commission a pass, we support Veterans Court. But I had spoken with the County Commission about a couple of weeks, excuse me, months ago, and I wanted just to give the County Commission a short update. Myself and Tim Woody today attended the Veterans Court training with Judge Donaghy in Cleveland and went over the, there was a mentor training manual today, it was about a four-hour-long training. And what a mentor is and how they work with Veterans Court is they're also a veteran, have been in the armed forces, and they provide peer-to-peer service, excuse me, counseling with the actual veteran that is in the court system. So, I know that Tim Woody will be heading that here in Polk County and working with the, getting mentors here in Polk County. And I will be working with Judge Donaghy, because as you all know, I can only take pleas on misdemeanors. Judge Donaghy can take pleas on felonies, so I'll be working with her if the person is charged with a felony, she'll be handling that side in Polk County. And if they're misdemeanor, she's going to work with me to make sure that we get them handled more frequently here in Polk County, because she doesn't come here as often as obviously I am here. And also, it's monitoring the veterans that are in the, in the jail. Like, right now, as of October 2nd, there are 12 veterans in our Polk County jail. So, that also involves monitoring, and obviously, that's going to change as they may bond and that type of thing. So, we're looking at about, she said, January 1st today to roll that out. I think realistically, because we haven't even had our mentor boot camp yet, I think realistically, it's probably going to be a little bit after that, but that is what we're shooting for, is January 1st to roll it out. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Yeah. I know that the Commission has been under fire lately about how we conduct meetings and things, and Mr. Woody and I went to a Commissioner Training week before last, and they gave us some information on how to set up rules and how to run meetings more effectively, because there was even some state laws being broken by both the Commission and people in the audience. So, this is some information we got from them, including some rules on Robert's Rules of Order. But I think it would be good if our Chairman would put together a committee so we come up with a set of standard set of rules that the public knows about and we know about, you can follow, so everybody stays out of trouble. Right now, we're operating under Robert's Rules of Order 11th Edition, I believe it is, was the last one voted in.
Paul was going to give us a grant or something. Paul was going to give us a grant or something, done wrong with the audience or something done wrong by the Commission.
The state law says that...
Just one, one each.
One each. Yeah. Anyone in the room that wants to talk must be recognized by the Commissioner first. They can't even make a motion unless...
Chairman.
By the Chairman. They can't even make a motion unless the Chairman recognizes, which he should recognize anybody that wants to be recognized on the committee. And anybody from, including the audience or the Commission that just shouts out out of order, it's a misdemeanor in Tennessee to interrupt a meeting like that. They could be arrested.
They can, and they could be let out.
Yes.
I, I spoke that two or three months ago, you know.
But if we can tell them a set of, standard set of rules and get it published in the paper and things, that here's how our meeting is going to be conducted, everybody knows the rules, we can go by them, so if our Chairman can put that together.
That's what that gab was for, the Chairman tells you to order, and if you don't, you can be let out.
The second thing is, we've been invited to ride the train to Copper Hill to see what tourism is all about up there, and it's information to the Commissioners here, uh, we could choose either November tenth or seventeenth to ride it, so we got to let them know something. So, if y'all can let me know how many could go on that day, which day you want it.
One thing I found out that, uh, concerning the train, which I'm not going to get into no heated argument over it because I always get blasted for this anyway, but, uh, one thing I did find out, which they may be totally in the right about it, uh, so that's why I'm not going to argue the fact, but I'll tell you one thing that's really under my skin is because Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum, the train owner, not Tennessee Overhill, the train owners are not even purchasing a business license to operate that business. Their personal business tax has been paid in Chattanooga under the value of their locomotives because that's their home base, which is under public utilities. Wherever they cross over, that has to be shared or something, but because they don't fall under that, they're getting out of that, but we're not even getting a business tax. And I don't get it. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't understand.
I've said it all along, and when I say it, I'm standing up for my kin, and I'm trying to recoup for every dollar possible. The only thing Polk County is getting is the garbage daily, in my opinion. And, I mean, we just keep finding that stuff from what we did, uh, and that's all we asked to get from Overhill is, you know, it's changed and stuff.
It knows what we want.
Well, and I just wanted a financial statement, mainly from the train itself, but even a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, a charity or whatever they're called, uh, you know, an, uh, where they don't make money or whatever, they still have to do financial statements.
Nonprofits.
Nonprofit, yeah. Thank you, Greg.
What's that?
And, uh, but anyway, and we never got that either, but, I mean, it really hurts me that that train, and they're not a nonprofit, Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum is not a nonprofit, and they're, they're making all this money and they're riding on Overhill's track, which is totally two separate issues here. They're loading up in Polk County, they're riding through Polk County, they're dismounting in Polk County, and they're not paying a business tax. I don't get it. I pay county business tax, city business tax to operate a stupid little car lot and a repair shop. And, and they're making all this and they're not having to pay us nothing? Oh, their land tax? Well, excuse me, I pay ten thousand dollars in land tax too. So does everybody here, you know, so, I don't know. Anyway, that's something I, that I want to find out about. I just don't get it.
Well, the very land that they're riding through, that they consider scenic and, uh, it's the, what they promote to sell tickets.
Yeah.
Is for service land.
Yeah.
For service land is the reason everybody in Polk County pays higher property.
Right, right.
And then, on top of that, you know, we're not even getting a business tax.
We're not even getting a business tax.
I just, uh...
And I'll tell you what really burnt me up too, and I meant to bring it tonight, was on their little, just that little single train ride brochure. All right, pull it out when everybody gets home, up in that one little corner to start it all off. Galloway is not even on their little frigging map. It's not even on it. Edgewall's on it, Chattanooga's on it, Knoxville's on it, and guess what? Where they mail at ain't even on it. And it doesn't say one thing about riding through the beautiful scenery of Polk County. Now, it's got Hawassy and it's got Farner, but let me tell you something, when you're not from here, you don't know. I met an outside person that come to my car lot the other day. I said, "Look at this brochure and tell me where you think you would be riding at." Well, they looked at it and they looked at it and, "Well, I don't know. It says that you get off in Copper Hill in Tennessee." Okay. I said, "If you rode that train and you weren't told by anybody and you thought, 'Man, this is beautiful here, I would love to come here and live,' you're going to have to go look up and say, 'Where you been?'" And then people gets mad because I have an issue with something that we've only got our beauty and then we can't even take up for that? So, anyway, them I get mad, they're mad, but anyway, end of that story, but I've got to find out about the business tax.
I think you'd have to find out.
I've said it once and I'll, I'll reiterate what I've said, but firstly, as far as tourism, tourism, uh, businesses in this county, such as Ration, that their numbers are good enough, they're self-sustaining, uh, they justify the...
We need a head charge.
Yeah, their numbers are bringing up to this county, they justify the services, but, and like I said, and I believe I can prove it, but some businesses are operating at a level that their liability, not an asset, in this county. I think the Ration Inn, and I'm not being biased, I'm just saying like it is, make it clear, the Ration Inn is self-sustaining and, uh, they are profitable for this county, and there's other businesses that is a liability for this county, and I feel like, you know, that's one of them. The more we dig, the more we find that, and the less this county can get. And that don't mean I'm anti-tourism, that means I'm, uh, have a, well, I'm just seeing things for what they're helping, and up here it is. Same question.
Well, you know, I realize that each person that drives through Polk County, we've got a chance of selling them a gallon of guys, selling them a candy bar, and if we're lucky, selling them a hot dog. You know, I don't deny that, and the more people we can get to come through, the more them coats and candy bars and maybe them gallon of guyses or whatever. But, you know, it, it don't, it's hard to justify the, the proof of what, like, Overhill is wanting to tell us that all of that generates, and, and I hope it does, I pray it does, but I've got a hard time seeing it the way they lay it out. And I've also talked to a lot of people that's been on that train, and they weren't given no exit code. They weren't asked, "How much did you spend today at Copper Hill?" They weren't asked, they didn't say, they wasn't asked nothing. Now, I'm not calling them, I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying that I've talked to about twenty-five, at least twenty-five people that I knew over the past two or three years that had rode the train and I called and asked them. I said, "Was you asked when you got off the train how much money you spent today?" And first, they just, I said, "I'm..." An exit code is what I'm trying to say. Was you, uh, no. So, and I talked to one little guy that worked on the train in the commissary, and he said, "I've, I've never seen, I've never seen it done." So, now, I don't know, like I say, I'm not disputing anybody's work, but I'm just saying that some of their stuff was questionable, and I don't, and I'm still not knocking those people. I, I know they're, they're in it for the benefit of tourism. I'm not taking that away, but it's just, give us something, give us something in return. And, and, you know, and when I seen that brochure, I about flipped when I seen, "We can't even give our money in that little corner." But Barry Edgewall was in there, and the shuttle leaves from Edgewall, but it, I think now it's really not even leaving it from Edgewall. Uh, but, you know, it couldn't even give us the warranty, and then we go to G Creek, or Dammoneau in Polk County, and now to go through our beautiful train ride through Polk County. So, you know, I mean, we ain't got much, but give us credit for what we've got.
What? You know, they say we can, you know, like I said, around, baiting off of Polk County, and I seen a story, was that a, in the Polk County U, was that, uh, like a freelance tractor, yeah, that economic boom that Copper Hill, that the rail line is bringing?
I don't think I'm on the agenda.
Uh, do what?
Think I'm on the agenda. Holler at me tomorrow.
Well, anyway, I just seen a story in a local paper, and a well-written story, but it just said what economic boom Copper Hill is getting from the train ride, and, I mean, if that's true, I'm happy for them, but I'd like to ask them to, uh, pay the county, they're twenty-five percent alone, they left us on the hook for us at times, it's good in Copper Hill, and I'd like to ask them to look at, uh, start their own waste departments instead of depending on Polk County.
That, that's the thing that aggravates me. Copper Hill does not make no money, very little off of that train out of Edgewall.
Yeah.
Now, if it's a Blue Ridge train?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They do very well. We got a train coming in every day, probably.
What's it?
Yeah, and, uh, covered up. I'd say Copper Hill makes ninety-nine percent more money off that train than we get off of that train out of Edgewall. And the businesses down there, they don't, I mean, they know that, uh, they, they know what's train bringing, they're doing it for them.
That's it.
It's not going out of Edgewall.
I think several of them have said it.
I asked that guy a month ago, how many times did they run that train a year? It, it wouldn't. What'd he tell you? What'd he tell you? Twenty? And Blue Ridge just bringing one down twice a day?
And that's why I'm saying liability versus asset. Blue Ridge to the asset, that was liability, and they all paid it, the shop owners.
And I'm going to tell this too, and they put it in the paper, and, uh, a lot of people don't know when we took that money from the, over here, where it went. It went to Polk County Park and Recreation Committee. We, we put money on East End and West End, we took that money and we split it in half and divided it. Uh, you go to our ball fields and, uh, they need a lot of work, and, you know, we're giving it back to Polk County, that's where that money went.
And I noticed the main...
And we, I mean, Park and Reg, I've been on the committee probably five years, and we haven't had a dollar in five years. We, we've come to the Commission and we got a bathroom, we had a porta potty, had a ball field, and, uh, that's what we had, and, uh...
Those ball tournaments, they bring revenue in people this county.
Yeah.
And, you know, when enough people come here and say to shake their hand, they say, "We don't want to have a tournament there." You know, and I think that was a good investment in our county as Overhill would have been. I mean, that, when they have tournaments here and BMX races...
It's giving back to Polk County, and people in Polk County.
And you're getting the return on your dollar too, just bringing people in. I'd say, uh, I'd say one baseball tournament brings as many people as county as, uh, two weeks of the train ride, uh, the equipment, if I was guessing.
Yeah, yeah, it, it can, and...
And it don't matter, when they, when they punch out into cash register, all we see sales tax. We don't know where it comes from, baseball tournament or a train ride, but anything we're doing to get people spending money in this county, I mean, you know, nine and a quarter cents, nine and a quarter cents.
Well, what would be the procedure for us to find out about this blank business tax that, that Tennessee Valley's not paying?
I guess, uh, would, uh, Mr. Yates?
I don't know whether he...
I guess I'd be placed, start and ask them how it works.
It could be Jackie. When I, when I got mine, I had to go, "Well, it's through Jack." Yeah. You might have to find out.
Yeah, I could probably find out.
And Randy would have the assistance.
I think it goes on...
As part of the problem.
Well, now, now, on that, you don't really, that because now the personal...
Personal problem.
Is being paid in Chattanooga. This is just buying a license, and then ever how much revenue they bring in is how much your license is based on.
The, uh, personal problem.
Personal property is like the worth of their, uh, trains. That's their personal property, and, and it, like I say, it all gets paid, Randy said, it all gets paid in Chattanooga because they fall under it, that, they're, they've wiggled out of that private, uh...
Four oh one.
Whatever, yeah, that, that, like CSX, CSX, they were paying us a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and when they closed down, and now they're not having, like I say, they're not even doing a personal, uh, I mean, a business license, which is not going to mount to a whole lot, but I don't care if it's fifteen dollars. I don't know why they're any better than I am. I just don't get it.
That's my point. I don't think anybody in this community is in any way against tourism, but...
No, I'm, I'm for it, a hundred and fifty percent.
Every time from this county that we feel like we've got to come, and that doesn't make us anti-tourism, makes us, uh, uh, good spokesmen for taxpayers. You know, somebody's got to speak it up.
Yeah.
Or it's more... Well, y'all, y'all two have dominated most of this, uh, talk about tourism, Overhill and so forth, let me say something.
Go right ahead.
Uh, the, uh, Blue Ridge train is what, seven miles away? And it's fifty miles from, uh, G Creek to Copper Hill, and that's a one-day trip. You can understand by that why Blue Ridge could run two trains. Well, we do run one, man. So, then, you're, naturally, they're going to be producing more as this other one's coming up. Once a day, they leave people there two and a half hours.
Why don't we give money to Blue Ridge train instead of Overhill? If they're bringing in three thousand of our money, why don't we give them money?
Well, Copper Hill is, they're receiving the benefit of...
Yeah, but, I mean, that, that has nothing to do with this.
Y'all already said it.
The county's giving money, why don't we give them twenty thousand dollars?
Have they asked for it?
They probably will now.
They will, if they hear it, if they hear it, but it's not our place to give Georgia, uh, the help. What's fine, fine, it's not Polk County's place to give money. In any business, if you don't advertise, and that's what this is all about, is advertising through, uh, these brochures and things, through, uh, uh, Overhill, they advertise our county. They demonstrated the many, the number of times it was in that one brochure, and many times they advertised Polk County.
Well, that's my thing though, James, hardly with this.
I mean, the, the, it's just one of them.
That's, that's what I heard, Paul. She said the, what was it? The, what?
Yeah, I mean, I will never be foreign if they don't change that brochure on the train ride.
Oh, well, that's least of my worries. The people are coming in.
They ain't mine because they see it.
You're looking at, you're looking at the whole county, they're bringing money into Copper Hill. I don't, if, if they got twenty dollars today, it'd be more than what they would have got.
Exactly. I understand that.
And you go around and follow everybody, you'd have to follow. Everybody around gets off that train to find out how much they spent.
Have you been up there when the train comes in to see how many people actually get off of it?
I've been on that train, I've, I've been on it.
I've been on it.
But not many people that get off of it, though. Blue Ridge train's full every time it pulls in.
Everybody that's on that train and pulls in there gets off that train. It may vary in the...
Well, I mean, I'm sure it's an option, but you know, if, but that's not, that's not my point, James, about that, and I understand, I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not trying to be ugly and I ain't trying to fight with nobody over there. I'm just saying that when I, that brochure the other day, if you're not from here and you pick up that brochure and you look at it, say, "Okay, now, I'm going to come, I'm going to come from Chattanooga, and I'm going to jump from Chattanooga to Edgewall because Benton ain't on this little map, and where we get on the train ain't on that map, so I'm going to go from Chattanooga to Edgewall. I'm going to go from Knoxville, well, from Knoxville you do come to Edgewall." But Edgewall, Edgewall was King Kong right here about the train. There's not one drop of that train or that track in that men county. CSX butts right up to it and they can't go on CSX properly. So, what I'm saying is, as far as the train ride itself goes, I just feel like they need to blow us out of the world with a brochure and make it so when people come and get on that train, that is a beautiful ride. I've been up to, you know, my husband run the track for years, I've been up down that track a bunch, but anyway, it blows you away, and I want people to say, "God, Polk County is gorgeous." I, I wanna move there. Man, I mean, it's, it's, it's drop dead gorgeous. That's my thing. Instead of it being, the brochure just, it, it doesn't blow us out, it, it, it to me. Now, it might blow everybody else away, and if it does, that's fine. I mean, you know, it's fine. It didn't make, it, it didn't. And I wouldn't have known where I was at if I was a stranger. I wouldn't, I would have had to ask, excuse me ma'am, uh, I love this area, where, where am I at? Ed, Edgewall or uh, or the high wasy gorge? Where, where would I, where, where did I move to to get this beauty?
And I think that's why numbers are so low as far as visits at Polk County Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Nobody realizes nine percent of stuff's in Polk County.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we're not being just, you know, I just want it to hit you. I just want, I just want the word Polk County to slap you in the face.
I dare say, if you stood down on seventy-five and you stopped everybody that was coming here fixing to go down Oakwood River.
Yeah.
I bet you ninety percent of them could not take it.
I think it's in, yeah, yeah. They don't, they think it's in Rabbit County, ninety percent of them.
Not only is Debbie morally right about what she's saying, I think it's all our responsibility to get behind her for this county. I mean, it's time somebody done something for this county. And that's not anti-terrorism, that's doing what's right for your county.
Can I ask a question? Like, it's really a statement. I mean, I kinda agree with you. I haven't seen the brochure. But maybe a good part of that would be telling redesign the brochure, we might consider.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It, that, that is, that's, that, that right there is, is my, my biggest piece. And, and, and two, finding out if we got any money to give. You gotta have money before you start promising to people.
The guy, the exact words we asked him, this, you know, at uh, all September meeting. You know, we said, we're not out against you, we're asking you to do this for our county. And you know what our wishes are and could you make some change? And he was very arrogant and he said, I'm just here to save y'all from yourselves. Exact words, what he said. Like that, he wanted to, that's what we said.
How much, how much have we got invested in that railway? Do we?
Not a bit.
No, because we didn't do the uh.
Yeah.
Rail authority, the rail authority that they wanted.
We could've been doing the same thing that they're doing right now.
And we thankfully didn't get uh held into the lawsuit that come with the uh vehicle got hit and relies. Because we didn't do the rail authority.
I'm glad, I'm glad Overhill bought the track. I'm not, I'm, I'm a, a history nut. I cannot stand to see history disappear. I'm very thankful that they bought it. I'm glad they could see past the end of their nose and did buy it. That's not my thing. That's not my complaint. My complaint is redo that brochure, slap it in the face with people that you're in Polk County. That's, that's all I'm asking. If they can't do that, then no, they ain't got no money coming from me, but now everybody else can do as they please. But I want that brochure to, to slap you in the face and you know where you're at when you get on that train. And when you pick up that brochure, I want you to know. And, you know, if you're mad about it, okay. But anyway, that's just why, I mean, I'm sorry, that's just, I don't, I wouldn't have a clue where I was at, if I didn't know where I was at.
Like Debbie's asking, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, really, it's a shame where I'd say here is the commission and I've been asked for that from somebody.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
But, you know, if they want the five thousand and we've got the five thousand to give them. When we figure out if we've got any money, I don't know if we got five dollars. But, you know, if we've got it and they can redo it with that brochure and make me ride through Polk County, then I'm with them. A hundred percent.
They turn the CSX, did they pay the Polk County business things?
But, well, I don't know about, I, I guess all of that came under, because they was under that public utility or public service, public something or other.
We got money from the state.
Yeah.
What is it? And uh, if you say John Holt.
It would be public utilities, but I don't know that we're getting any money from them.
No, well, we're not.
CSX, UBA, CSX.
We ain't getting nothing now. Yeah, we was getting a hundred fifty-eight thousand.
I believe that that uh, uh, when CSX abandoned this railroad. That uh, people, the owner, one of the owners of the company. Gave them the switch yard and all this stuff that was on company property. And uh.
Yeah, and say they got those yards up there that somebody.
They're getting money for storage.
Yeah, a bunch.
A bunch.
A bunch. What do you know?
They bring them up there, they cut, they cut the, the uh crossings that goes, that went into the plant. But at one time, they were taking some railcars up to the old railroad shop at the company.
Yeah.
And the people there that was working there at that time done repair work on them, on all this stuff. And uh, but then there's something about the law that they, the state cut that railroad, cut that crossing out that goes into the plant.
Yeah.
Except for down at the wastewater treatment plant that's over there. They've got to keep that going no matter what EPA, of course, excuse my partiality. If Donald Trump don't do away with EPA.
Yeah.
That has got to be kept up. And to keep what water that does drain off the company property from being a, you know, messing up the Oakwood.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, like I say, there, there's a lot of money being made up there sitting those cars that they charge storage on. They charge to CSX and whoever. Somebody's making big bucks right by there.
That one time that Overhill owned that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if they do or don't.
Because it was only two million dollars at that time.
Yeah.
That it was sold to them for.
For just the yard? You talking about the whole track?
No, the, the rail.
Yeah, they do. Overhill does own the rail.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they do. Now, the yards up there, I don't know if Overhill owns them or if that's the train company that owns that.
Uh, well.
Because I think Overhill's getting the, the train.
Most of it is Overhill.
Yeah, I, I don't know about that. We'll have to check into that.
They may have leased it out to somebody else. I don't know.
They may have, because I don't think they're getting, I don't think that, that car money is going to Overhill. If they, if it were, they'd be in really good shape. But I don't think it is.
Yeah, they would have to ask for some money.
Yeah. But I, I don't think so.
Somebody's making some money.
Yeah, that, that, right. Somebody's making money and it may not be Overhill.
Something in Polk County that shouldn't be paying taxes.
Right. I mean, and, you know, my argument was all the time, I wasn't trying to say Overhill was making big bucks. I don't know, they might be going in the hole. I wasn't allowed to say that. You know, the man wouldn't give us anything. And uh, but the train outfit, I promise you that he ain't running that train and not making money. Now, that, that's a given. So, a, and at least we need a business tax out of that and we need more. But, uh, anyway, anyway, all right, I'll shut up. Go ahead, whoever.
Everybody. The man's still a duck.
I wouldn't, I'd like to say, I'll ask the question. There was a motion made a couple of years ago to fund the lights at the ballfield right across the road down here. The girls' space, uh softball field. And it was kicked around and bids, so, so, I never did see a bid on it, but anyway, bids were supposed to have been let out. Y'all, you guys know about it, they were donating at that time.
Just three of them.
And uh, the uh, the bids, you know, was not acceptable to at least one person that's not on the commission now. And uh, well, I'll tell you, uh, Mr. Bishop. He asked that the commission see how much that uh Tri-State, which is a Georgia entity. Would donate before the commission made a, you know, request to go ahead and, and do the, do the lights. But it was voted on by the commission to do the lights. We've not seen a light. We don't have any netting for those kids that play down there, rec ball. Two, one goes across the backstop, it's about thirty or forty yards down in a gully. From where the backstop is set. Two fields is that way. We've got these kids that runs up and down that bank and pine trees and uh pine needles and all that. Slipping and sliding and falling. Daniel's seen it for years. I saw it for several years, but I'd like for that to be reconsidered by this commission. To put those lights up and ball season fixing to start during two, three months. And somebody's gonna get hurt going up and down them valleys to hunt and get the ball that goes off down the bank. You gotta have a bucket pull to have a ball game.
If we approved it the last time, then I guess Holt didn't do RFPs on it again, is that right?
He done one set of them, Brooks, and they come in, but there was some issue on the.
And after that, we approved it again.
Poles, pole hat or something.
Yeah, yeah. So we should have. One bid, the highest bid I've, I've heard was uh, I believe, uh, John, you probably remember, it was probably about eighty something, eighty-two or three thousand dollars.
I thought it was eighty-eight, but it might be, it might be eighty-two.
Okay, I think, I, well, I was thinking, you know, close to eighty-three, eighty-four thousand.
We do a building committee meeting in South Polk, that was next Thursday, uh, what is day's date?
Committee meeting?
What's day's date?
Day's date.
We do it next Thursday, twenty-fifth, we'll just meet with the West Polk Fire and Rescue and uh meet the man too. Get the ball roll on that. I thought, and I am, I admit, I'm bothered sometimes, but I thought that when we voted that second time, that, you know, Holt would do RFPs again.
We never had any comeback to this, Greg, after the second time and there was a thing about Tri-State and seeing uh, about a donation or a time labor. And putting, if they put the uh poles up or donate the poles maybe.
No, Tri-State wasn't gonna donate poles. The poles has been, the uh. The poles have been changed for the size that they got to be by the state. We've got six, eight poles laying over there. Aluminum poles laying again in fence. They're sixty-three feet high, I mean, could be. But they've made a, the state has got another different thing now and they've gotta be ninety feet. It's gotta be ninety feet. That's counting what goes in the ground.
Can I help my grandfather in some play with the ball or donate it before the rule is changed?
I think they changed come about the time of the donation, Greg.
The uh, I don't know, what they, they've been over there for over fifteen years.
I'd say they're up and get by with, man, they're not gonna put up.
Oh, yeah, they're up, it's okay. The foot, the, the uh boys' field is just right across the parking lot. Plenty of lights. The girls' field, that's discrimination. I mean, that, that's, you get stayed off. You can't give one without giving any to the other. And I'm just, I'd just like to see it. But like I.
Come next Thursday, up here at seven, the building committee meeting.
Next Thursday?
Is that, is that enough notice, one week?
Yeah, on the committee it is.
So we'll have a building committee meeting next Thursday.
Well, now, let, let you know one more thing. The Tri-State said they would make a donation, but they wasn't gonna make the donation before. That the county got, got the building situation underway. They didn't say how much they could give. See, they got that same thing that what uh electric company.
V C.
And uh, Ben's got. If your light bill is ten dollars and forty-five cents, they raise it to the next dollar. And you, and the tri, and that's what they, they do with that money that, that your dollar extra, fifty cents extra or whatever. That you sign up to let them, let, you know, just up your bill to the next dollar. And they have got quite a bit of money, but they do a lot of help. But I've been noticing too, that a lot of, most of it's in Georgia, because that's where the Tri-State's at. But it used to be in Tennessee until they voted it out, the, the board then, to move it to Georgia. But anyway, and it used to be in Copper Hill. Right there where Dr. Muse's office is at. And a lot, and on that, where that building is being built, that was the Tri-State property. It fenced in with all their trucks and different things in it. But uh, I was told by one of the board members that they would look at it. And whatever the average that they could come up with, they would make a donation.
If it's like V C, uh, polk government cannot apply for it if it's that same funding like V C. But a group organization outside the government can make the application.
The, your rec league, the rec league could go to the Tri-State and ask for donations. The Tri-State will not build on county property.
No, that's not what I'm saying. The, the helping chairs grant for V C, uh, governments cannot ask.
Yeah, right.
But a group individuals can't.
Cause I'm president of Little League Football. And, and, and I could ask. I've already talked with Billy Joe Puntersell about it.
Trying to ask.
Yeah. We've got the tri, uh, the uh, Corporation Youth Sports League is what it's called. And it has, we got received a dime from Polk County. But we do use the facilities to have softball on and baseball. But the boys' field has got flights, the girls' field we don't. We need uh netting, we bought it for net, uh batting cages, stuff like that. With what money did we raise for the league, for the kids? And that's what we spend it for. It don't go to nobody else. It don't go to vacation that's gathered by them. They drive here with their kids.
Well, that's made that third of the uh, said, and uh, we'll make them uh, West Polk Fire and Rescue and uh, and tragedy gets on.
Yes, it, it, everybody, everybody else, that's just a, I've got pictures whenever I first came into the office. What the uh tire situation was like out behind the dump. I'm sure Kenny had been out by there. I think inmate crews cleaned up about three hundred tires and there was stuff full of water. Uh, which once again, that's the ballfields are on there, on the west end. A lot of mosquitoes, but this is a, a proposal that I'd like to put in Polk County newspaper. I just want you as commissioners to be aware of it, to kind of read over it. So, it's just a list of things that state law has required for people to dump those waste tires at the facility. A common person can dump five tires a month and sixty tires a year. But if you're not a licensed tire dealer, you cannot dump those tires on that facility. And uh, and there, and some of you all have asked, what if somebody's over, there'll be a key provided and selected that on the east side. That's kind of what we base this off of, on the east side of the county, you have to go into the facility, ask for the key, unlock the trailer to get in. And if there's another person that comes, say, there, we've got a gate and fence has been donated. So as long as they get inside of that fenced area, the attendant would be able to tell the inmate crews. That they let another person dump five tires that could not get in and then the inmate crews would put the tires in the trailer, have it stacked up. So.
Where's the attendant?
The attendant is the one that runs the dump.
So the dump's what?
I've talked to the dump. Yes, sir, I've talked to the dump. The dump will go ahead and institute this handling. And then they would include in their bid package whenever repeating that the uh facility comes up in a couple of months or so. I just want everybody to be aware that that's what uh, what takes a new name.
Anybody help this with the cross key?
Yes. If you're not a licensed tire dealer, you cannot throw them out. If somebody throws tires outside of the chain link area, that's a, that's a, that's a fence that's there up there. That's throwing ball out there as a material county problem.
What's a five month old private session?
Five tires a month. And if it's, that'd be sixty tires in a, in a year.
Private session, that's what it is. Private session, tires a year.
Great. And the, and side operator, whenever you pull into the facility, you, you, you give your license. And the, and side operator, whenever you pull into the facility, you, you, you give your license, your address on the, on the...
There's a way to track, that's all I have.
Correct, that is, yes, there's a way to track it.
Now, tire distributors, they're supposed to have to wait for, for they collect the dent.
Correct.
That matches the number of tires.
Correct.
The dump side dependence will take care of the ball, they won't take care of it?
We will take care of that, the dump side of it will take care to make sure that nobody throws tires outside of that facility. It don't matter if they've got a certificate of five hundred tires, if they throw five hundred tires on the ground, they're gonna be prosecuted. They got to get inside of the chain link area, it was cleaned up like it is right now.
And the fines are not like a, you know, it's getting over the length of the fence, you just want to find.
It's a hundred dollar fee, but it's a per tire, is that right?
Could I ask you? Or eat nobody up?
Walmart, places like that, charges, what is it, three dollars per tire? Charges three dollars per tire for, to get rid of. If I buy my tires up here at Murphy, North Carolina, at Walmart, or Blue Ridge, York, Blue Ridge shop, I don't know if they sell tires or not, but anyway, uh, most of your Walmarts do. And, uh, then if you pay them twelve dollars to dispose the tires, and you come back to Tennessee, and then you, you know, you've got some bad tires you gotta get rid of, then, it's, we're gonna have to pay to get rid of. There's a one way.
Say Walmart's making money, son.
There's one way to get out of paying a three-dollar a tire at Walmart.
Take you over with you, trade you both.
There you go. Except in Georgia.
I'd ride on, I've sworn out for Walmart when they done what they done to the dairy farm or the life school around, I said, that's it. I ain't step foot, one step foot, I'll star to death before they ever get a dime from me ever, ever again. I hate it. And, and I, yeah, everybody don't realize, but they destroy it, they destroy it.
You can't haul over from Red Copper Hill.
Yeah.
In the, in Lynch.
I'd go home and make it before I die, Walter.
Can I pick you with me, you guys?
Yeah, I know, well, we live in Lynch, they're, they know, so, I know.
But all that's good, thank you for this.
You know, they're gonna, the, the, the dumps, the, the dump, the people, the side operators, they're willing to do this as a good thing. Right, they're not, they're not gonna charge you any, just right now. But then what they'll do is they'll just adjust their bid, whatever the bid's gonna be, because I was like, I mean, Daniel, Harry, and Samantha, oh, that's not... That's the way this, that's the way this is done on the east side of the county.
What you, what you put, bring your tires in, they got eighteen oil drums, what you, what you get the key, unlock it, and then it's in the swivel or something, where you just, so, then they're back to...
And they done, and the reason on the east side of the county, whenever they started this, they were going through twenty, twenty to twenty-six trailers a year, and then when they implemented on the east side, what, we won't implement on the west side, like, cut back to Polk. So, it was, that, I mean, it was drastic from what I've been told, because people realized, I can't just go around and start picking up used tires and start bringing them in and throwing them out, so...
God, God, that's right of camp, like, you know, front page of the Times, like, yeah, I saw that on the news. And it was for man's ear, he...
He's throwing them in the ditch, and he was like, they asked me what he was doing, he said, well, I just try and make my life a little better.